We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's come to the meeting tonight and all those who'll be watching it on G-10 television. To begin with, we're going to rise in just a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jerry Bittner, followed by the invocation by our City Attorney John Carter. Please rise.
Please join me in reciting the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for this beautiful day and for your gracious gifts and blessings you bestow upon each of us individually and upon our city of Jacksonville. We give thanks for all of our employees here at the city of Jacksonville who give of their service and time and efforts each day to serve our city and its citizens, but especially tonight we give thanks for those who will be recognized and also those who will be promoted. Bless them as they continue in their service to our city and citizens. We pray for our marine and sailors and others who are serving our service members, who are serving us here and around the world. Keep them safe and bless their anxious families. And as always, give your guidance and your direction to our mayor and to our council. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Please be seated. Council, would you entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
A motion, the second. Is there any discussion here? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we're going to do, we have a couple of presentations to make tonight, and I'll come around front. For the first presentation tonight, we're going to do some commendations, and at this time, I'd like to ask Chief Vunero to come on up front and help me out here. I'd also like to ask Detective Kevin Doyle. Also, we have with us tonight from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, Special Agent in Charge Shawn Stallow and Special Agent Mike Horn.
Mike Horn.
Horn.
Sorry about that.
Can't read the chief's writing. Okay. Mike Horn. If you would come up with this, unless I'm jeopardizing your identity. In January of 2017, Detective Kevin Doyle, as a task force officer with Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms and Explosives, was asked to review and recommend action regarding a gang-related heroin distribution ring operating between Jacksonville and New Bern. After reviewing reports, photos, and videos, Detective Doyle swiftly recognized a sophisticated heroin drug trafficking organization with a strong supply from the Brooklyn, New York area. In addition to the large-scale distribution of heroin, several members of the gang organization were identified as suspects involved in homicides, robberies, shootings, and assaults in eastern North Carolina. Detective Doyle began developing confidential sources in the organization and conducting controlled purchases of heroin from those within the network. During this activity, Detective Doyle began presenting the case to the U.S. Attorney's Office for federal prosecution, the process that took several months to complete. During July of 2017, Detective Doyle obtained a federal Title III Wire Interception Authorization on a leader in the organization, with the activity being monitored at the Jacksonville Center for Public Safety and surveillance teams operating in New Bern. During this time, 12 agencies were assisting with the operation with Detective Doyle as the lead agent. Paperclip there. Just 20 days later, Detective Doyle was able to obtain authorization for a second federal Title III Wire Intercept. 64 days after obtaining the first federal Title III Wire Intercept, he obtained a third on a leader of a violent subset of the organization. Detective Doyle was able to maintain three simultaneous wire intercepts, control surveillance operations, daily briefings to the United States Attorney's Office, and maintain the myriad of complex paperwork required to maintain a large-scale operation. On October 24, 2017, after more than 17,000 intercepted audio files, Detective Doyle orchestrated the safe execution of seven simultaneous search warrants in and around the New Bern, North Carolina, which involved several tactical teams and teams of law enforcement agents. After indicting 17 gang members, Detective Doyle was able to conduct interviews with the subjects that resulted in solving two cold case homicides and information that the organization was responsible for the distribution of over 150 kilograms of heroin in eastern North Carolina. Detective Doyle's leadership, initiative, judgment, and ability to think quickly led to the first wire intercept at the Center of Public Safety. Furthermore, Detective Doyle's unwavering law enforcement abilities and work ethic has established great credit upon himself, the Jacksonville Police Department, and the Special Operations Division. His exceptional service and leadership is worthy of the agency's Meritorious Service Award.
Well, on behalf of ATF and federal law enforcement everywhere, Kevin, truly one of the best impact cases I've seen in my 20-year career, from him to take it from the level it was at all the way to indictment of dozens of individuals solving homicides in addition to other violent crimes. It's truly what we need to be doing out there. And again, Kevin, I couldn't be more impressed, and neither could these folks. So anyway, thank you again, and I'm ready for the next one, so, whenever you are.
this time, I'd like to ask Detective Justin Morris and Tim Carr if they'll join me up front here with the chief. In December of 2015, Jacksonville Police Department Special Operations Detectives Justin Morris and Timothy Carr opened an investigation into a drug trafficking organization operating in Jacksonville. One of the leaders had been operating as a primary supplier of cocaine in Jacksonville for over a decade. Through investigation, Detectives Morris and Carr were able to map and identify the leaders as well as the means of distribution of the narcotics. Over the course of two years, Detective Morris and Carr utilized every investigative tool available to systematically disrupt and dismantle this criminal organization. They were able to check source information through the use of telephone analysis, tracking of crack cocaine distribution through use of court-approved GPS tracking devices, as well as the tried and true methods of thorough interrogation outlining the history of the criminal organizations. As a result of their investigative techniques, they were successful in identifying and arresting one of the sources of supply with a substantial amount of cocaine. That arrest led to an inbound load of 6.2 pounds of heroin, one pound of methamphetamine, and $16,692 being intercepted in Greensboro on its way to our community. For you that don't know, that's a lot of dope. This was not the end of this narcotics investigation. Detectives Morris and Carr, with the assistance of all Special Operations Division detectives, conducted controlled purchases from and surveillance on members of the organization. They strategically arrested certain members at the street level in order to further build the criminal case through interviews that would lead to the indictment of nine defendants. Many of these have already been sentenced or have pled guilty and are currently awaiting their sentencing dates. The professionalism, tenacity, and investigative abilities shown by Detectives Morris and Carr led to the disruption and dismantling of a large-scale cocaine drug trafficking organization operating in our city. Additionally, this case led to the largest known heroin and methamphetamine seizure by members of the police department. Their investigation will have a positive impact on the quality of life for all citizens in the city of Jacksonville. Their exceptional service and action in keeping drugs off the streets of Jacksonville is worthy of the police commendation award. And we will present those awards. Justin, good job, buddy.
Like I said, that's a lot of dope.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it. At least those ones aren't anymore, though. We're going to do some promotions now in our police department, and at this time, I would like to ask James Michael Capps and Charles James and families that may be present, James Michael Capps is being promoted from lieutenant to captain. James Michael Capps was born in Wilmington, North, Mike Capps was born in Wilmington, North Carolina, the son of Mickey and Janet Capps, and raised in the Hall's Run community. He attended Dixon High School, graduating in 1992. After high school, he served six years in the North Carolina National Guard while attending community college. He graduated from Coastal Carolina Community College in 2005 with an associate's degree in criminal justice, and graduated summa cum laude from Mount Olive College in 2008 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice administration. Captain Capps began his law enforcement career at the Jacksonville Police Department in 1996, serving in the Patrol Division and Street Crimes Unit before being assigned to the Criminal Investigative Division. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2005 and worked as a first-line supervisor for the Patrol Division, also the Community Response Team, the Special Operations Division, and the Criminal Investigation Division. In 2012, he was promoted to lieutenant and assigned to the Patrol Division as a uniformed patrol platoon commander. He is currently assigned as the department's Internal Affairs Officer. Captain Capps is a certified North Carolina Police Firearms Instructor. He is also a certified facilitator for the International Association of Chiefs of Police and has taught in the leadership and public safety organizations curriculum since 2008. He's approaching his 20th year on the agency SWAT team and is currently the entry team leader. Captain Capps is a recent graduate of North Carolina State University's Administrative Officer Management Program. He and his wife Susan, hello Susan, have been married for 18 years, and they are the parents of three daughters, Mackenzie and Elise and Elizabeth Capps. Good to see you all. Now let me turn your attention to the James side over here. Charles James is being promoted from lieutenant to captain also. Charles James was born in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. During his father's military service, his family moved to Jacksonville while Chuck was in middle school. He attended Jacksonville High School, and upon graduating in 1994, he immediately enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. He served as an infantry mortar man deploying on duty stations throughout the globe. Chuck began his law enforcement career at the Jacksonville Police Department in 1998, serving in the Patrol Division. He also served as a school resource officer assigned to the Community Services Division and a detective in both the Special Operations Division and Criminal Investigations Division. He was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2007, and he has served as a first-line supervisor for the Patrol Division, the Community Response Team, the Traffic Division, and Property Management and Evidence Divisions. In 2015, he was promoted to lieutenant and assigned to the Patrol Division as a watch commander. He graduated from Mount Olive College in 2010 with honors with a bachelor's degree in criminology and criminal justice. He and his wife Christie have been married for two years. They have six children. All right, so let's do this. You got, somebody going to hold the Bible for you, Mike? You got it under control.
Folks are taking pictures, filming.
Yeah, come on up. Just don't get in each other's way. All right. I want to place, okay, there you go. Let's get it so the camera can get you there. Okay. Place your left, place your left, there you go. You need to be smiling. He's going to up your allowance now. Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I am Charles Capps.
Do solemnly swear that I will be alert and vigilant in performing my duties as a captain of the City of Jacksonville Police Department.
Of the City of Jacksonville Police Department.
That I will not be influenced in any matter on account of personal bias or prejudice. That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute the duties of my office as captain of the City of Jacksonville Police Department.
Of the City of Jacksonville Police Department.
According to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment, so help me God. Congratulations, captains.
I'm around here, here's some good shots, right here. Come over here. Yes.
All the way over here.
Family photos. You can stand this way just a second. Captain Mayor, this is Dan. Are you good in there? Cameras?
Thank you very much.
I start with that group. You guys will stand to the side just a minute.
I would like to have the two captains. Mayor. You have members of the command staff in here, Ronnie, you and Ashley. You might even invite Tim off the panel.
Looks like a great team, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
You know, we've done some promotions for some people that, you know, didn't stay with me long before I left, but, you know, I knew you guys were going to be, and girls, ladies. Ashley, you were one of them from 1997. We hired and had a whole lot of hope in, and it's all coming to fruition now. We got a great, I think we got a wonderful management team there in the police department. And you can see that, you know...
in the police department. And you can see that, you know, what we did earlier with some of the presentations, the Commendation Awards, how, you know, our officers really get out there and work. They do a great job, but it's the folks like you that help direct that energy that they have. And appreciate it. All right. So we're going to take a quick break here in the action. I know there's a lot of you that probably came just for the presentations tonight and the promotions. I'm going to take, like I said, take a few seconds. If you want to leave, now's a good time to
Hit the road.
Hit the road, or or get gone. Hey, but let me add this. You're welcome to stay. I like to see people move up, though. That's really great. That's really great. So this will be our first section of public comment for the evening. No one has signed up, but some of you may have come in before the sheet, after the sheet was taken up. If anyone's present wishes to speak at public comment, please indicate by raising your hand. All right. So we're going to go on to the next item here, and this will be the adoption of the minutes and the consent items. The minutes are from the January 28, 2019 Joint City-County Meeting and the February 5, 2019 Regular Workshop Meeting.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the minutes and consent items.
You have a second? Is there any discussion here? None. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That brings us to reports for the evening. And I'm going to start with Councilmember Jackson.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Bittner?
Those of you waiting for my usual incisive report will have to suffer through your disappointment this evening. No report.
So disappointing.
Mayor Protim Lozah.
Thank you, Mayor. Had the honor of attending the Dicks Crisis Center ribbon-cutting, and it was a moving moment. It's obviously something that we've been working on for quite some time. And just the realization of the partnerships between the city, the county, and really regional partnerships that we were able to accomplish for our common good was very heartwarming. It was very well-attended. And now the real work, excuse me, the real work begins. The facility is just absolutely beautiful. Great job that was completed, and we could be proud of that accomplishment. So thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I'm going to make a quick report. I had the opportunity today to do one of my favorite things, which is make Jacksonville a more beautiful place. I was mowing the lawn over in Northwoods for a lady that had called. And across the street, a gentleman pulled up into the house across the street, and he went up and got the garbage can and brought it down to the end of the street. And I was kind of concerned, so I went to him, and I said, "Sir, they picked up the garbage in this neighborhood yesterday." And he says, "I know that they did, but the elderly lady that lives here realized it was a holiday, and so she's called into sanitation, and they were coming by to pick up her garbage today on Tuesday." I thought that was pretty good service for our sanitation department. That was nice.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, just I wanted to thank the city manager, Richard, Dr. Woodruff, and staff. Thank you for your quick response on the traffic incidents in front of Jacksonville High School. Thank you for attempting to fix that problem and hopefully keep some students safe. I hope that some of the things that your group has brought forward will hopefully prevent a tragic accident. It's bad enough somebody's got hurt, but we certainly don't want it to go the other way. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank the city staff for that. And also, when we got our agenda, and I was reading the detectives' accomplishments, I was very impressed with the level of professionalism and really what they accomplished in getting drugs and crimes. It helps, definitely helps you feel like you live in a safer community when you know you've got such great police officers working on our behalf. So thanks to them and very proud of our police. We've got a great police. Very proud of what they do. They're very pro-community. We do, they have a good reputation out in the community. They have good relationships with just about everybody in town, and I think we're very blessed to have them. And it definitely is a blessing for our city to have such fine police officers. So thank you all.
Amen. I echo that sentiment also. It was a — both of those seizures, both those investigations really took a lot of drugs off the street. And I was clowning around a little bit about how much dope it was, but actually, that was a lot of dope. That could have ended up — you never know. It may have been the drugs that may have taken a life, you know, had they got through, or may have caused another person to be addicted. But it's great, it's great work they're doing. They're focusing on the right things over there at the police department. And again, I'm proud of the two guys that got promoted tonight. Both of them worked for me when I was still there. And like I say, you know, they kind of, they made me proud, you know, to be able to move up in the organization like they have. Anyway, Dr. Woodruff?
We do have two items we'd like to cover in the One City Moment. Mr. Thomas, I'm going to make a special note to try to find out who the person was with sanitation. That's the kind of service that you, as a council, have asked us to establish, and I'm glad to know that it's there. As we start the One City Moment, we have two items, the state of the community. As you all know, we gathered the first Friday in February down at the New River Air Station. The mayor did an excellent job presenting the state of the city. We had other speakers, and as you can see, it was a panel, and they answered a number of questions about the status of the community. Overall, I think everybody who attended would agree that we're very fortunate, that we have this type of camaraderie, that we have the community effort, and the commitment of all parties that work in this community for the betterment of our organization and our community. Now, Groundhog Day. Every now and then, in the course of mankind, there comes a special event, and the mayor is the one who got to do this. So, Mayor, you talk about what happened on Groundhog Day.
Well, Groundhog really kind of disappointed me just a little bit. It's as though the rain wasn't enough that we get here. The little thing saw his shadow, and I guess that equates to a prediction, his prediction that we had six more weeks of winter to face. And I hope he's wrong. I hope he was nearsighted and didn't see his shadow. But as you can see there, his shadow is being cast. We should have shaded him a little bit more than we did, but anyway. It was amazing. He's a possum wood huck, and he's a gentle little creature, loves people. And, you know, he was, the little kids were really amazed by him walking around and all. I never realized their teeth were so, they got teeth like a beaver just about. I guess they're, they are rodents, but it was a good event. The kids loved it. And, you know, it's just an annual thing. This was the second, I think this was our second year doing it.
Second year, yes. At Thompson Elementary School, just down the street. Beyond that, I would remind the council that tomorrow, Mr. Lozah, Mr. Jackson, and I will be attending in Raleigh the Town and State Meeting Dinner, where we're going to have about 350 people from local governments, meeting with about 150 of your legislative delegation members. And we look forward to that event. Mr. Lozah continues to be the outstanding leader of the NCLM, North Carolina League of Municipalities. I believe you continue through May of this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Through May.
With that, I want to thank the mayor and council. Excellent work. We appreciate the leadership and all you do for this community.
Thank you. Mr. Carr? No reports. Entertain a motion to adjourn? To move. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed?